Just gonna be replacing, just like it is right now? Or is there a drainage system of some sort being considered? Because we have a lot of trouble. Ice buildup, or rapid snowmelt, or rain shower. It can come in the back door.
Yeah.
All comes down that alley. And on the end.
So, from, you know, right behind the bank, that concrete's in really good shape.
Uh huh.
Uh, but Jared, our engineer, I don't know if they talked about a plan for great degrade or anything, but go ahead, Jared.
Yeah, alright, so it's mostly asphalt today. We're gonna replace some of the concrete, then we're starting to start rebuilding there. So the plan is to take care of the area.
So there'll actually be a drain in the alley that'll drain down?
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's drainage.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, everything else will be, you know, like Jared said. We decided we want to do the right way, do the concrete and not asphalt, and the fact that, right now, it can't hardly run at all. You know, there's so many low spots in there that it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah, coming through that door or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
And then as far as it just being, um, is it for that block, it's just, it's just dealt with on that block, right?
Yeah. Well, Monty talked about the district here in a moment, but the area, but yeah, that's, that's. Monty, is there anything else you want, you need to, you want to add or show that, or?
No, basically, that's indicated, it's just the lots one through eighteen and block four of the original town.
I think I'm on my cursor line, right there.
It's just this one block. These, the entire block is included in the district created by the board. So that those are the people who would be assessed for the improvement.
In the alley that intersects and goes north, there'll be nothing done on that one, correct?
That is correct. Nothing was proposed for that anyway.
Right. Jason, do you have a question?
No, I just counted, so there's twelve businesses and six residential. You count that, correct?
Yeah.
Jesse, we're, we're in the public hearing for the, the project right now.
Hey.
Um, we heard from Jen, there's no, there's no written protest. Did you have anything you wanted to add, or just wanted to hear what, you know, what's happening, or?
Just here to see what's happening.
Okay.
You and I have talked about it before already.
Numerous times.
I just hope it gets done, because otherwise, I don't know. Let me and the alley fall apart, so.
Rapidly, yeah.
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 It's gonna get backed up quick, creating a spring for me if we don't do this project.
Are you gonna improve the rest of your area back there at the same time, or what's?
I might.
Yeah.
There's consideration of that, you know? I don't know. So from what I see, the surface of the alley, you're looking at putting cement in?
Yes, not asphalt, yeah.
So is there a option to add that to the project? Have the same contractor do mine and pay for it as part of the project, or?
It'd be, it'd probably be separate, would it, correct, Monty?
As far as.
If the individual businesses have their own, or? Individual product.
Do, do they have the option of having that built into the project itself and then assessed back out to them as, as an add-on?
Or is it better to just do it on our own?
It was included in the estimates for the project, based on the different businesses. But.
What, for my actual parking lot, I mean?
Yeah. Yeah, for your little spot behind your business, was included in the estimates for the entire project, but it would be billed to you directly then, so.
Straight billed or through assessments? Doesn't matter to me. If I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do the whole thing and pay for it, one way or the other.
Generally, it would just be straight billed.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll look at that.
And then Jared, whoever, the contractors, will they do those at the same time, or how does that work?
So, we have to design this and bid it, um, really. We, we have to design the whole thing at once to make sure that it works. We can't just design the alley, so we have to. If they design the whole thing, make sure it drains. Once we have the plans approved, I'll bring the plans back to you in a month when I ask for your approval. I think some of these questions, you guys can decide then. These people wanna have it, you know, as an alternate. I, I'm, I'm not sure yet. I have to design it all regardless.
Because as far as my parking lot, I'd like it, I'd like that as a separate, if I do it or if I don't do it. You know?
Yeah.
Because if the number's crazy for my parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that was the idea, that they would basically be alternates to the project, depending on who wants them done.
Who wants to do it, who doesn't.
But we need to make sure the project works from a drainage standpoint. If, if he ups out, then we, we still need to make sure, even though you've made it as a complete design, if you take that piece out, we still need to make sure that we've got appropriate drainage for the rest of that alleyway.
Yeah, right. You know what they want. One way or another, my lot's most likely gonna get cemented. I just don't know if we'll get cemented by them.
Yeah.
You know, elevation is gonna be what elevation is according to their project. I gotta make my building and their alley meet up, you know, so. But yeah, it's, it's something I've kinda thought about doing for years, but without the alley being done.
Yep.
It's kind of a mess.
Yep.
So.
I agree.
Okay. Sorry I was late, by the way.
I hope so.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if there are none, then we would need a motion to move forward with the resolution of necessity for this project.
I'll come during the regular meeting.
Oh, that's right, okay. Alright, so then if there are no other comments or questions, we will close the public hearing at this time. Okay? And we'll call the meeting to order for the regular meeting. Um, everybody raise your eyes, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you please say her, please? Sure, everyone on the ball there, yes. Your heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the day, for the time we have to spend together this evening. We thank you for the weather that we've been experiencing for our region here. Pray that you watch over all those who begin their traveling with the holiday seasons, and that you can watch over them. Pray that you watch over the activities of the meeting this evening, that they may be pleasing to you, pleasing to the citizens in which we support. Your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Alright, um, down to three, reading and approval of minutes for the December fourth meeting, please.
Motion to approve, it's just a reading.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
The second by Pillar. Discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, minutes are approved. Uh, approval of the agenda, any changes or corrections to the agenda?
It's on my addition number twelve B.
Yep, if you see there's, you have twelve B, we have Arbor Day proclamation.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of twelve B Arbor Day proclamation.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, agenda is set. Five A, we will have, uh, first of all, the action on the resolution of necessity from the project, the hearing we had. So at this time, then we will need a motion to move forward with this project.
So moved.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
And second by Weidrich, discussion. Vocal.
Hack.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenor.
Aye, motion carried. Alright, that's good news. Thank you all. Um, Jen and. Jesse, if you wanna stay, you sure can. If you wanna leave at this time? It's up to you. Alright, engineer report. Jared.
Alright, so, I'm gonna go through four different, um, items here tonight. Uh, excuse me, I'll just mention expedition states. Um, we've basically closed out with that job, minor, minus some point punch list or warranty items that come up in the springtime, so nothing really to report there. Um, next thing I have is the Union State Bank alley that we were talking about. Um, what I have for you is a task order to create the design services. The way I envision this is kinda like what we talked about, have to design the whole thing regardless of whether you're gonna build it or not. And so that's what I've included here. Um, we'll have to decide how exactly we're gonna bid that when it, it comes to the, the other parts. I don't care if we do it as, you know, one alternate or four alternates, or how we do that, but we'll figure that out. You know, it's just something I gotta think about a little bit, or if there's, you know, something that's critical to another piece, I just have to be mindful of. Because I know that there's likelihood that some of them will get built and some of them won't get built, so I understand. It may be a little complicated, but.
Fair enough, okay.
But it all has to work. Um, now what I have, I'm just gonna go through them all real quick first, like, Monty, but. Since you're going through doing a project, there's some efficiency in adding some things at this point. So, some of the other things we've talked about here, when we did the televising this summer, um, I think there's about ten or eleven spot repairs need to happen. So, I would suggest that at this point, since we're going through the design bidding process, that we address those at this time. Some of them can be done with trenchless methods, some of them need to be dug up. Um, so what I've got is just task order seventeen, which would be to do that design and bidding kind of as an add-on to the alley project at the same time. And what I've got is task order eighteen, which is the water meter replacement job. Um, what I kind of envisioned there is that there's about four vendors that would be interested in bidding on your water meter replacement project. Right now, you have census meters in town, and they're coming to end of life. With water meters, there's a battery on them, and then in fifteen years, that MXU or that reason, they're, will stop working. Monty, have they stopped working yet? Okay, I'm not. Okay. You're very near to the point where your, your system is gonna be obsolete. So there's a need to replace the water meter system. You guys already know that, but when it comes to designing and replacing that, I envision it just a little bit different than a straight bid, because there's really no metering system that's exactly apples to apples. I picture a little bit more of a, um, um. If we just look at capital costs and don't look at the life expectancy of them, we're gonna get a cheaper meter, but we're, it's not gonna be the, the best, um, the best decision for you. So, I kind of envision this a little more like, um, like a scoring and ranking type of thing, where, where capital cost is weighed, but we also weigh warranty, and we also weigh, um, maybe five or six other factors. So, there'd be a little more effort into this. It's something we've done and what other communities do as well, so we don't just wind up with the cheapest. It's cheap. They're all gonna be relatively close to each other, but. Um, so the way I laid this task order out is, you know, think of like pointing a panel and Google scoring and ranking, and then we'll bring up a recommendation back to the council. It may not necessarily be the lowest capital cost, but, um, be the best value, is what I would say. So that's the way I've laid out task order eighteen for, for doing meter replacement projects.
And then, and your timeframe on the, on that one is, what, what are you thinking on that?
For all of these, um, we'd like to bid these near the end of January.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I ask a question because our, our water individual is, is kind of asking that question as well, because he's, he's gotta determine whether or not he buys some additional spare parts at this time, or if he waits until we, we've got a green light and understanding of who the vendor would be.
Yeah, and so, my plan is to, um, at your January meeting, I'll request approval of plans, live advertise for three weeks, and I'd like to be bidding these around the end of January. That's, it's kind of a good time to bid things, you know, the winter, contractors are still looking and hungry. Don't really wanna be bidding things in May these days, because material, neat times. These meters, depending on who you go with, they might be a year out. So, may have to order some parts anyway, I don't know. But anyways, um, and then the last thing I have is the lift station control panel upgrades. Um, you've got two lift stations in town that have auto dialers on them, and it's, uh, they're not, not currently hooked up, but that is a way of, um, getting alarms when you have, um, trouble, uh, emergency situations of those, but you're not using them. Um, you could go with that system and pay a monthly fee to, you know, have them call somebody when there's a problem. Or this idea is to put antennas on them and then to link them up with your new SCADA system that you have here, which is kind of a more advanced technology than the old two thousand and three, um, auto dialer system that's never been used. So, what we're proposing here is designing it and bidding, we're upgrading the, upgrading those panels with antennas, you know, to function with the, the current system we have. I've got one, two, three, and four. They're all a little different. Um, I do wanna mention with the water meter replacement, the, kind of the reason we're targeting that end of January timeframe is, um, we're gonna recommend that you seek cost share from State Water Commission on this. You are eligible. I have done water meter replacement projects with them. They have funded them before, just talked with the cost share person, State Water Commission. He doesn't see any problem with it. They offer sixty percent cost share for these water projects. That being said, that program is, it's fickle. Um, you guys will have to have somebody attend those meetings and just. It, like I said, they funded them before, but there is a chance that they could not wanna fund this project for some reason. And I just, I, I want you to know, there's no, there's no promises. Doing a water meter replacement project is about seven hundred thousand bucks. So, if we can get sixty percent cost share, that's phenomenal. But I'm just telling you that any time you request cost share from that entity, it's, it can be a little painful. So the idea was, well, we'll, we'll have bids, and then we'll request cost share, um, at the February State Water Commission meeting, just like we normally would.
So, Monty, if that, if that were to fall on its face, in terms of funding from, from that particular program, are we still in line to, to receive monies from the pre-dug fund?
We're in line, but they changed the priority of those funds. So, if, there's no guarantee when that's going to happen, because they moved the city infrastructure farther down after they fill all the other buckets. Pools, buckets, yeah. We do have ARPA money available, um, nearly four hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money is still available. And we do, we'll have about eighty thousand of the pre-dug funds left after the water tank project as well, yeah.
So, if we go forward with this, we'll turn in the State Water Commission cost share request this week. It's gotta be on forty-five days ahead of that February meeting. Um, if for some reason we have a hiccup or whatever, it'll be at the April State Water Commission meeting. You know, for some reason, if we get feedback that they're. It's just that you guys are not on the state water plan, and the very first time that we can request cost share is in February. That's six months after this biennium has started. And if they have a lot of cost share requests, or they, they kind of fund things as they go, right? When they build up money, then they like to fund things. There is a potential they can slide us back to April. I don't know. If they do, then just have to, we'll either slide the bid, you know, bid time back, or we'll have to hold bids a little longer, so maybe you guys know that question.
Mm-hmm.
But, it's a good plan. Any questions?
Are we worried that these, our existing water meters are gonna start failing?
Probably.
Yes.
So the, the indication that we got from just Cota Supply Group on the existing technology is when they, they met with us recently, they were, they were giving us or setting the expectation that their, their equipment could be a year to a year and a half out. But they felt like they were giving us the heads up, the appropriate heads up, that would allow that timeframe to be successful.
And maybe that's one of the factors you guys consider when selecting. Maybe that's part of our scoring and ranking process, is the, the delivery, where that is, yeah.
So you, you, you want a, a yes or no from us on, on that part, then?
I just think there's, the, the alley design and bidding services I've laid out is task order sixteen. I, I feel like that's probably gonna happen. The other ones are just options for you guys, either gonna. If you wanna do them now, just for efficiency, and I, I, you know, put our costs together based on doing them as half months. If we wait three minutes, I just have to relook at those costs, maybe two adjustments. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Well, either way, we're gonna have to look at it now or two weeks from now, right?
I feel like it would be appropriate to move forward on, uh, on directing them to, to all of those. I think they were all priority projects that we had talked about when we were putting together our budget for this next year. And we know with the, with the heads up that we've received on the water meters, that's, I think it's a foregone conclusion that that's gonna have to be done.
Chief Sewer Representative on the State Water Commission.
Mm-hmm. I can visit with him a little bit about the project too. Dealt with him, done a few projects, the Water Resource Board.
It's, it's highly recommended that you visit with your.
Yeah.
Commissioner ahead of time.
Mm-hmm. If you guys would like.
That'd be great.
Talk to him a little bit about that. As far as the meeting goes, more than happy to go to that. I've done a few of those for the Water Resource Board too. If you guys are unavailable, we usually do it over Zoom.
Okay. They just funded the exact same project in Napoleon.
Okay.
It's three hundred thousand dollars for them. Same, yours, I mean, every, every one of these, you need, you can build your own building, system, tower, or whatever you decide to do here, but. They've covered some of the key points they wanna know, but they're city-owned meters, it's, yeah.
Now that we're at the end of life, end of life, all of that.
And that we're paying for the current State Water Commission-funded water project, and we're relying on rates to generate money. Pay for that, right? Those are some of the key points they wanna hear.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
So then on the sewer work, and I guess what are all the spots, I guess, I'm not sure.
When we did, when we televised the fifty blocks of clay sewer mains, we did a facility plan, and that included maps that showed, I think there's about nine or ten of those, Casey, that you should get a foil and a location of the spots that had to be dug up and fixed. Or not dug, they're not all dig-up ones, but in some cases, there's a, there's a line born through it, or there's a broken pipe, or there's something. Some, I think some of them can be fixed with spot, you know, trenchless.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, those are what came out of the televising, yeah.
We, we got that report. About a month, yeah, a couple of months ago, so I can get that back to you, can't see if it's.
I was, no, yeah, no, that's fine. Well, so then on those spots, I guess, even if we move ahead as with this project, I guess we're probably going to. Probably gonna have to, then I guess, uh, do that project, right?
So repairing the problem spots is priority number one, because there's, there's broken pipe. Ultimately, the best decision is to then line those clay pipes. That's not, not to that point yet, right? I mean, lining fifty blocks of pipes, I can't remember, it might be a million dollars to do that. But that, see, we televised everything in two thousand and eighteen, and then televised everything here again in two thousand and twenty-three. So in five years, you've got ten due spot repairs to do. The way to stop that deterioration and, and, you know, just prevent it from keeping, keeping going is to, to do a cure-and-place pipe lining project, which I would absolutely recommend. It's just, that's a, you know, maybe you can, maybe we can save for it to do that, you know, in the near future. Otherwise, there, it's clay pipe. It's, it's brittle stuff, you know, it's just gonna keep cracking and breaking and moving, as well. But there's ten spots, yeah. I shouldn't say ten, I can't remember. I have to look at that facility plan, but I think here, yeah. It's in, it's in the report.
Yeah.
Casey, was your question more if we approve these task orders that the projects have to be done?
Yeah.
Is that, I mean.
Right, right.
I mean, I would think if we're gonna spend the money on, I guess, now, that these projects would get done, you know?
It's a mere, well.
Yeah.
Unless, unless all of a sudden we find out that.
We don't get cost share, or?
Yeah, something stands in the way of it, and.
It's coming too high.
I don't know.
Well, and that's not gonna be cheap, get cheaper?
Probably not.
Every year, everything keeps going up, too, now, so.
And these aren't, these aren't projects that are fluff. These are the infrastructure of our community that. Ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years down the road, that these are important, they have to. But it's just hard to follow the, sometimes the.
And you can't, we can't do.
Sticker shark.
We can't do a lining type project without fixing these spot repairs, no, anyway, so. It's a, it's a logical step to fix the, the problems and, you know? I'm always looking for money. There's cost share out there for you, you guys don't qualify for much, but there is something. Like I said this before, you guys could use some, um, a sewer project like that and qualify for sixty percent cost share from the state for the water side of things, but you don't qualify for any of this, you know, on the sewer side.
Today?
Today. There has been talk that the State Water Commission will start funding sewer projects in the future. I don't know, it, it, maybe it's just talk, but it's, it's a potential. It'd be great for you guys to be hip.
I'm gonna make a motion this evening that we, we move forward with directing more to carry out the design phase on each of the projects that you really shared with us. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and number nineteen?
That would be correct.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Discussion. Jared, I'm looking at, what page is this? The fourth page of your. So, total of included services, which on this one is forty-eight thousand, is that four?
I think overall, all four of them together is about eighty, to take it through all the biddings, paid services, I believe.
Through this, the, all the way through the bidding process?
Yes, yeah, on, on all of them, yeah.
Too far. Oh, no.
There it is. So that's for the.
You said page four, yeah.
Yeah, my bad. So that one there is for the, if it's the water or the sewer.
The alley. This is the alley.
That is all right, good.
Alley parking lot, you know, it's all.
Got it, okay. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Another discussion. Vocal.
Hiller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Weidrich.
Aye.
Omenor.
Uh, very.
Yeah. So, we're gonna be busy on this. We're gonna be seeking approval. We're gonna be seeking approval of the plans in January. There may still be a few design details to clarify at that point, but in order to meet that into January, you know, bid opening so that we can get State Water Commission with those costs, I'm gonna have to hustle, so. I doubt they'll be, yeah, you're meeting January second, but I'll probably have some design clarification things to go through and probably be working with staff during that time. I don't have anything else on here. Do you have anything else for me?
Any idea when we're gonna see televising on?
It will not be until it's up.
Okay. Okay, so what do you, are they gotta wait for the ground to thaw again?
Yep, so right now.
How long do you think the rest of this project is gonna take? It's just driving me nuts.
The rule of thumb to replace a pump or something is about a week of luck, if they really get after it. So, if they get after it, that means two weeks of digging, maybe two weeks of waiting delays and other stuff, but there's no reason it couldn't be done by July. But I, I can't, if this were your guys' project, you know, being done under your control, who would have controls and penalties and whatever? This is a unique, well, it's not unique, but it's being privately built, and it's just unfortunate that they've got a few people already living in the subdivision that they're working on. That is unique, but, I mean, you normally wouldn't, yeah, you just wouldn't, wouldn't get this far normally, but with the lawsuits and the delays, it just happened that way. So, that's not really, that's not normal, but it's.
Yeah. Little discounted.
We're not gonna kick anybody out of their homes, but it's, there's definitely some problems.
Yeah, it's, you're right.
But you, I just, you're not gonna hear anything until we ask for them. I've got on my calendar in February to ask Williams Building Company for a schedule, and I know we're pushing them, we're pushing as hard as we can.
Okay, good.
It's just you don't have much control.
Yeah, thank you.
So, in our, in our last meeting, we had some discussion on a repair of the trenching under over there, under the cement to replace, put a conduit in there and run new cables through there for the pathway lighting. Did that involve at all any correspondence or discussions with these guys? No? Okay, so that was just in-house, we were doing that?
Yeah.
Okay. We had a brief discussion, it's, it's the, I'll call it the end of the line, light along that pathway over there, and it was determined that there was a cable fault there. And we just threw out the discussion that the repair cost seemed a little steep for one light, and so then we threw out the idea of, should we entertain the idea of maybe a light, we were talking about over by Buster's Place, some solar solutions?
Solar, for us, if we're doing like RRFBs or lights or whatever, it all, it all depends on the cost to get power there. You know, if, if, if power is close and is, you know, if we're not bringing power from a half mile away, usually that is the better alternative, but if power's close, then a lot of times, you kinda just, you don't go with the solar option in those cases. So, they're both fine, they both work great, but it's all about the cost to get the power there. And I'm sure directionally boring a line or something is, that's all your time, a ten thousand dollars, no matter if it's under a road or a trail or where it's at, it's just, it doesn't matter if it's serving one light or a hundred lights, that's just the cost of doing that, unfortunately. Solar is, like I said, it gets great, but that equipment has a life too. So, if, you know, if you're looking at the long-term value, might just be a hand if I do it.
Well, one of the stumbling, I'll call it a stumbling block or points of concern was, making it aesthetically pleasing in terms of, you got one here on the path that's connected, and then over here on the other side of the concrete, you have another one, and to match them, you know, if you go solar on that one there and then just deadhead this one here at the end of that AC run, you may not be able to get a match, and we have to, we have to discern how important that match is to us from a financial standpoint. Lot, lot of non-financial decisions there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can almost replace the solar three times, it's still that spend, what it's gonna cost to do the other one?
Yeah.
Dave just.
Your experience with solar lighting on our side of it, our maintenance side, what is the battery light usually run for these solar valves? I know like we have two solar stop signs in town, and them batteries are about eighteen months. And we're replacing batteries, so like you do a solar street lights, they have a bike path, you know, how often do you have to change them batteries? What, what have you seen for the expectancy of the battery packs?
I know they're getting better, but Monty, we just had some, me, Monty and I were just emailing with the company that was doing those. Do you remember?
They never did, can be then.
Okay.
Firm, no.
That was one of the questions.
I'm sure.
I think it depends on the area.
Yeah.
And a lot of many other things.
Monty, didn't they have a five-year warranty on their battery pack?
I thought it was.
Yeah, there was a five-year warranty on the battery pack, but that doesn't mean that they have that kind of life necessarily. That means if they're.
We haven't, there's plenty of solar stuff around.
Yeah, there is.
It's not, it's not, you know, it's not, we don't have them, but I don't know the answer to it.
Well, it depends on how often you have to change batteries, I mean, and the cost of the battery, if you're changing them every twelve or eighteen months, or in the course of a twenty-year lifespan, you know, that might be quite a bit of boring cover.
Yep, no question.
One of the things is, you know, I don't know what road that is before you get to Ula, it goes by.
Can't you all?
Monmouth, where they used to live.
Oh.
So, right on that corner, around that intersection, that's where they have. So, I'm, at the state, I'm guessing. So, I mean, if we first contact those people, we find out how often those batteries need to be switched out.
But, yeah, so we look at that one, Buster, does it, is it physically pleasing when you look at it? You got this giant arm, a solar panel hanging off there, and this big white battery box hanging there, I mean, that's fine out in the country, but do you want that on your street?
Well, the, the stuff that we look at from the company out of South Dakota is very aesthetically pleasing, and it's very good-looking. I wouldn't, I would not have you put up a wooden pole over there if you didn't have to, and they're very aesthetically pleasing, you know.
I agree. But you, I know we talked about that's.
That one out there, that's a beast, it is. And maybe for what the state wanted in terms of longevity and stuff like that, it requires the beast, I don't know.
The state looks at it the same way. They just say, how much does it cost to run power all the way out to X? If it's too much, they just do something, that's simple, that's their choice. To just weigh the cost.
Good, another question, Jared.
I'm gonna sit down for a while.
All right, we're moving down to. We didn't roll call. Eighty-eight, liquor licenses. Jimmy's and He's a Bottle Shop and Hub.
Boxes.
And boxes.
Motion to approve all of the other licenses.
Motion by Weider.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion.
Everything the same as last year, pretty much, right?
Yeah.
Monty, no?
Yeah, there were no changes on these.
Uh, roll call?
Who? I'm sorry, who's second? Casey. Weider.
Hi. Pat.
Hi.
Heller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Allman Hour.
Hi.
Motion, Jared. Katie reports, wire, sewer, garbage.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Streets.
We're gonna get the closer with our, with our other associates, but I have most to report at this time.
Black Veil needed it?
Yeah.
Casey, my name's Bussin, I grew up here. Bussin, police fire four street.
Um, see, you guys seem that Rod has no, or Steve, not Rod, has no clue if we can get a new police vehicle at all. I did talk to Cap Fleet down in Texas, still waiting for them to call back, and Guardian Fleet down in Minnesota, still waiting on that to get back to me too, to see if we can get anything from those guys.
What's their products?
Um, Chevys.
Chevys?
Uh, they'll get, those guys can get anything. I know I talked to Chris Fuller this morning, they have a couple Chevy pickups available, at least on their website they did, and he talked to them and they had a few, like two hundred Duranglets coming in this spring. So, we all possibly could go that route, and no police officers don't really wanna go that route, because they're a little bit smaller, but how long do we keep kicking this can down the road? Shoot. But we can give a purchase order to Steve, and he can place the order and see if we happen to get one. Did ask Monty if we are able to back out of that, if we give it to him and we find something else, and we did say we can back out of it, as well. I think at this time, I'd like to make a motion to give Steve a purchase order, to get one on order for the PPB Tahoe.
And this, this is the one that you've talked about numerous times that has everything that we want.
Correct, yeah.
We're not sacrificing anything for timeliness or anything like that in this one here.
Not really.
Okay.
So, this would be exactly like the county runs.
Okay.
The, they run all PPB Tahos, as right now, they are looking to replace Pauls that got totaled out this few weeks ago now, they're struggling to, you know. They're, they're to the point where they're just gonna start ordering whatever they can get also. What Lawler's been finding is that the Chevy Tahos and the Chevys on the civilian market have actually been selling pretty good, same with Ford, where Dodges on the civilian side don't sell as good, that's why there's more available for their police vehicles than our GM side of things. Not saying we have to go down that road right now, but maybe something to look at in the future too.
So, these two different options?
The SSV is a special purpose vehicle. That comes with the aluminum wheels, doesn't come with the big, the bigger brakes. You know, the PPB is more set up to be a police vehicle. They use, like, the SSV is more for undercover type cars, because, I mean, it look like your regular Tahoe, but they don't come with the bigger brimble brakes and some of the other features, that's why there is a price difference.
And not much, less than a thousand bucks.
Yeah. So, for that price, I think it's well off just going with the PPB.
Do you have a motion or a second yet?
No.
I'll second that.
Motion by Weider and a second by Heller. Discussion. Roll call.
Weider. Hi. Heller. Hi. Pat.
Hi.
Stern. Hi. Allman Hour.
Motion, Jared.
Okay, Corey called me, Chief Beery, called me on Friday, Monty emailed him his budget stuff, he was a little confused on it, and I know I've talked to Monty about this before, and neither me or Corey understand it. Under the radios we purchased this year was fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, but we did get twenty-one thousand of that back from the state, but on his budget, that does not reflect that. So, it shows that we're fourteen thousand dollars over budget, but by ours, we've, we see that we're six, should be six thousand, but it's good. And he was wondering about that, because in the last several year, couple of years, we've moved whatever was left into the truck replacement fund. Well, if it shows that we're fourteen thousand over budget, I don't know that we can really do that, but, you know, like Monty said, that twenty-one thousand went into the general fund, which I do agree with that, this is all the general fund, but it's almost like this should be changed down twenty-one thousand to thirty, thirty-two thousand? So, I guess I didn't really have an answer for him.
Well, it's off my head is that, you know. You know, on that new truck and stuff we did, I mean, like, pay a lot, you know, on that new truck that you guys have, so, you know, I guess it goes back to the general fund, and we can do as we please with it.
Yeah, and that's the reason we've been moving whatever we can into the truck replacement, because this was six hundred and, just over six hundred thousand, if I remember off the top of my head. Twenty years from now, when we go to replace that, it's gonna be over a million dollars, and we only budget five thousand dollars a year to go into a truck replacement fund, that's not even gonna be the down payment on it. So, that's why we've been taking whatever we can on the side, until we get a decent amount, well, this is Corey's plan, until we get a decent amount into that truck replacement fund, then we can, you know, maybe not do that, or, you know, move it wherever, and I get what you're saying too, but at five thousand dollars a year, we're gonna be an even worse of a predicament than we were a few years ago.
But that's, Monty, that's the practice that we've always had, in terms of when we get rebate money or whatever back, it just goes into general fund, despite.
Some came out of general funds that they go back into general.
Yep, which I do understand that, but it just doesn't reflect it on here.
Because you're only looking at expenditures, not revenue, right?
Yes, correct.
So, and we do take the ten thousand dollars from the rural and put it into the reserve every year as well. Because they're paying, the rural pledged ten thousand dollars per year for the, for a new truck, so that also goes into the reserve every year, so you put fifteen thousand a year in. Granted, it's still not a lot, but, you know. And we did spend the fifty-one thousand out of there, so.
We did, yes.
Or fifty-three, whatever it was.
Fifty-three, almost fifty-four thousand.
I guess that's the practice we've had. You know, there's some things we need to change that process, but.
We're not, we're not the only operation that, yeah, I know, when I was at Deco Gasification, you know, we would always struggle with that idea as well, it's like, well, shoot, we did all of this with it, you know, to get that money back, why did it just go to the company and not into our, you know, our budget to where we could then use it for something else? It is, it's kind of a standard practice like that.
Okay, so we'll just leave that one alone then. Now, I do have some runs for the fire department. We had a motor vehicle accident on November fifteenth at Highway two hundred, we did end up, and zap, we did end up getting disregarded to that one. At twelve-six, we had the motor vehicle accident on Buffalo Hill, we were out there for multiple hours for that one. And then twelve-seven, we had a structure fire, we had mutual aid within the pew lot, ended up being a kitchen that burnt up, so. And then we did have just another one too, another motor vehicle accident out at twenty-seven and eighteen.
And then we did have just another one too, another motor vehicle accident out at, um, twenty-seven and eighteen oh six. That was another pretty bad one.
That was Thursday, Wednesday, I think, Thursday afternoon.
Last week?
Yeah. Yeah, it was Thursday afternoon, and then we had a, right after that, we had a lift assist in Hayes and with the ambulance also. So, been fairly busy last couple of weeks for us.
Is there another one?
Um, we also did uh, help with the funeral procession over in Buellup. And then did, uh, me and one other firefighter did help escort Paul down to, and then to the veteran cemetery on Friday of last week. So, then police did, Chief Wolf also was on that procession down to the veteran cemetery. So, that's all I got for now.
Yeah, thank you. Buster.
All right, well, I'll try not to be as long as Dusty, okay? Seems like he's got the heaviest portfolios all of them. I don't know how that works. Uh, a week, uh, a week ago tomorrow, we had a meeting with Talon and the representatives and a bunch of other representatives over in Buellup. Actually, there were about twenty-five of us around the table in Buellup, so, and it was a very, very good meeting. One of the things that, um, we talked about a lot of things, and one of the things that, uh, uh, Talon, you know, they're mining out of Camerac, Minnesota, which is uh, kind of north, but not, it's closer up to the Boundary Water area, but one of the things that they did after they moved into that area, they made certain that they have a presence in that city. It's not a very big city. You know, Camerac itself is only probably about, has a population of maybe eighty. But they moved all of their office people to Camerac, uh, and part of it is to show that they wanna be local. And they didn't specifically say that, uh, last Tuesday when we met, but when I had met with those folks earlier, um, you know, approximately a year ago or whatever, we talked about that, and that's one of the things that they wanna do, is they wanna have a local presence in Mercer County in terms of where things will be. Uh, of course, we talked about, you know, some of their product. Uh, everybody's aware that they got the big, uh, uh, federal grant, you know, for three hundred, uh, I think it was a hundred and fourteen million. Uh, another thing that we did find out though also is this, is that, uh, the Air Force also had a grant for twenty-eight point five million, and that is one of the, uh, I would say probably one of the hidden secrets that people don't realize is that the military is actually looking at, uh, this product as well as a byproduct for military purposes, which is, which is, uh, it gets pretty big when you start talking about them, uh, becoming a player in, uh, in the end product in terms of where things are at. Uh, you know, that in, uh, I'm just looking at, uh, China invested fifteen billion in, uh, from two thirteen to two sixteen in their, uh, work with nickel and whatever, which represented a two hundred and ninety percent increase, and they, they produce most of all of this stuff that Talon is hoping to, uh, mine, or not, excuse me, not mine. We're gonna refine it in Mercer County, is the idea. Uh, another aspect of it that I did not realize, uh, is, is that also they can use some of the byproduct for stainless steel, and that was another thing that, uh, uh, so, uh, talking about, uh, an eighty percent increase in a need for nickel by twenty thirty-five. Uh, and so that, you know, that's not very far out anymore. Uh, and he used this term, uh, uh, talked about Buellup Battery Minerals Processing Facility. I don't know if that'll be the official tagline to it, but that's one term that he had mentioned, you know? And then the other thing that, uh, there was a question about, you know, uh, uh, will the Camerac mine be able to supply all of the, the byproduct that is needed for the contract that they have with Tesla? And part of it is this, they also have the four hundred thousand acre mine up in Michigan, plus they also have, uh, they are able to, if necessary, bring in product from Canada to also, uh, help them meet their demands in terms of where things are at. Uh, another part of the, of the conversation, we, uh, we, there was another company that was there represented, and that was, I gotta look at the name here. Uh, Tabertine.
Tabertine.
Tabertine, Tabertine, and, uh, interesting because, uh, their role is to refine everything. They want to be able to have, uh, use all of the byproduct, okay? That would come out of the mining process, and if they were able to do that, which I suspect they would probably be able to do that because there were some pretty, um, high level people in the room, right Dan? I would say, yeah.
Very smart. That lady from Berkeley is super smart.
And, and, uh, part of it is to eliminate, while they said most of the waste, you know, in terms of where things are at, so that's kind of the big scope in terms of what Talon is looking to do. They haven't, uh, released a site yet, and they won't because that, some of that is still in the process of being negotiated. Uh, but, uh, I will say, I would say this, and I think they're pretty high on Mercer County. Another thing that was, uh, I think very beneficial was the fact that we have someone from the Department of Commerce there, okay? Uh, Tom Oakland was there, he, he represents the energy side of Commerce. Talked about, uh, a number of the programs that they would be eligible for in terms of savings uh, from the standpoint of, uh, tax abatements and those kinds of things. Uh, that was, you could tell by the body language and the notes that they were taking because some of, well, the, the Tabertine people, they'd never heard of any of this, you know? Uh, and they were really, they were really taking a lot of notes, you know, in order to take advantage of some of these kinds of things. Uh, another thing in addition, and Tom spoke for probably, I'm gonna guess probably most a half hour on, on, uh, the, the things that are, are available in, in North Dakota in terms of where things are at. Uh, we also heard a presentation from John Gay, who is the, one of the main guys at Energy and Environmental Research Center in North York. And he talked about, uh, the critical minerals and, uh, essential elements that they are doing research on. Uh, there's a lot of potential, a lot of prospect for what is available in our lignite coal, more so than what people even anticipate in terms of number wise. It's just a matter of, they're not ready to go to production yet in terms of some of those things, some of those critical minerals. But they have been able to identify, uh, they did identify, uh, they, a number of those in terms of where things are at. Now, it got a little heavy for me because they have a chart up there, and he was, uh, showing all of the different chemicals that they have, and I wanted to look at just one more piece of my notes here. It was a full day. Oh, a couple, one of the things that we talked about. Uh, Beaver talked about the fact that, uh, you know, uh, there will, we really wanna take a look at, uh, doing a rail study uh, to see where things are at, because, you know, one of the things that they talk about is this, is that they get a hundred train, unit train going across Buellup and it stops right in the middle of town. They can't get from the north to the south without going about ten miles out of town. Okay? Uh, job study workforce, and then talked about doing, uh, getting a, uh, a five-year, a five-year plan in terms of what, in, in terms of Mercer County. Another thing that was discussed is, uh, well, today I sat in on, on the, uh, hearing, uh, Energy Resource Center from the Capital Natural Resources, and I can't remember the other tagline to it. But, uh, it was, all morning it focused on natural gas, okay? Uh, and there was a lot of testimony in regard to natural gas relative to where it's at, and I did not know this. But right now, basically, uh, in present legislation, there is no present legislation that would indicate that we can move gas from north to south. It is only east to west. And don't ask me why, I don't know. I don't know if it was oversight or whatever, but somebody brought that up. One of the things too is, is we listened to a, um, gal from, uh, uh, Dakota Natural Gas and talked with the, uh, the legislators that were on the committee with, our Senator Baim is part of that committee. Uh, talked about maybe we oughta look at having a regional hub. Having a regional hub said would probably make it a little bit more feasible in terms of, you know, cost wise, in terms of where things are at, so. So all in all, uh, it was, uh, it was a good, it was a very good session today, and, um, one of the things, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit and talk about, you know, the pipeline, that business that I said, I heard that. Uh, you know, I know we have pipelines that run from the north to the south, the, the large pipelines, okay? Like Northern Border and those, but my understanding, the way I was interpreting it was, is that, uh, most of the discussion in North Dakota, as far as the legislative bodies concerned, is running from east or from west to east and trying to get to the metro areas, of course, of Fargo, Grand Forks and what have you. So, maybe down the road, some of that will change. And then Beaver did testify, uh, and so I had talked to him afterwards, and he did tell me that after the, when they, they did a noon break then, he said that almost every one of those folks that was there, uh, grabbed him and wanted to visit with him some more about some of our needs in Mercer County, so maybe, who knows where it'll go. But at least they're hearing about Mercer County. Sorry Dusty, I was longer than you.
Thanks Buster. If we have any questions for Buster, I know, um, Dan was at that same meeting, uh, with Talon Batteries. I was on Zoom with him for about an hour and a half, but Dan, anything you wanna add to?
I just think it was, uh, it was a very well put together discussion of a lot of, what I'll say, like-minded individuals and kudos to this whole McEd organization. They, they've got a lot of ideas floating out there and are following up and getting in touch with the right people for, for the potential benefits to, to Mercer County, specifically Hayes and Buellup area. Some, some really outstanding opportunities that are out there, and they're, they're just keeping going after more and more of those type of things, so. Good thing we've got those type of people in our, our joining communities here that are looking out for the future.
Did Talon mention, um, having Talon Hall meetings for, I know that they're having in mind?
I don't think specifically this time, but you know, previously when we had met with them, we actually first time they had talked about doing that.
Yeah. Cause one of the biggest concerns in the communities is the waste.
Yeah.
And, and I thought, what I heard, you know, that gal from Berkeley who is kind of interested, she's from Berkeley, she's not, not super, uh, green, but how she was, how smart she was and talked about how clean this actually is, this whole process, and the waste of, the waste product is gonna be very minimal, I'm just impressed by that, but that's what I want. I hope Talon gets up in front of our communities and can talk directly to that and have people ask questions.
I think once they are able to identify the site.
Okay.
Then they will come back and, yeah, the plan is to bring them back in and probably even, uh, show the mining operation that they do in Camerac, and so people are, are aware of where things are at.
The interesting part of the, the discussion from the, the gal from Berkeley was, uh, that it, it's, it's basically an opportunity to sequester C O two.
C O two.
And, and basically the material, the, the tailings, which are the byproducts of this process of refining the nickel, that is, uh, is a material that when you combine some chemistry and some voodoo and everything like that, it, it absorbs C O two in such a manner that you can't get it back out. So it's, it's a little different than sequestering C O two by putting it down into caverns within the earth and stuff like that. It's actually embedding it into these materials. And then basically you can go sprinkle it out in the field if you want to, and it, and it's, uh, nobody's in harm's way at all with that. And so the, the beauty of the discussion that occurred was, uh, was planting the seed that there's C O two that's coming from these coal-fired power plants, and that may be a good opportunity to take that C O two and combine it, you know, developing a partnership and stuff where they could maybe share some of the, uh, the tax benefits that are being put out there by storing it in this material, because the first part of the conversation from the Berkeley gal was basically grabbing ambient C O two out of the air. And then, and then using it to absorb into this material, and we said, oh, there's an abundance of C O two coming from these coal-fired power plants, and if you marry with that, now you can keep using this, uh, natural resource that we have an abundance of up here, and everybody ends up winning, so. I don't know that they've ever had that conversation presented to them before, so it was at least planting the seed, and it was a good setting to do that.
All right, thank you guys. Any other questions for Dan or Buster? All right. All right, let's move down to correspondent, uh, ten A, uh, maintenance agreement with Steins. Monty, you wanna push on that?
We entered into a maintenance agreement with Steins for the scrubber and those types of things here at City Hall a few years ago. They're re-re- renewing the contract and asked that we get approval because they did change their rate from a hundred dollars per quarter to a hundred and twenty dollars per quarter for that service.
Okay, we need a motion if we want to, uh, move into this agreement for the, uh, new pricing.
So.
A motion by Hack. Second by Stern. Discussion. Uh, we need a roll call, Monty?
No, it's a contract, so no problem.
Yeah.
Hack, I, Stern, uh, Pillar, I, Weider, I, Holman Hour.
I, motion carry. I want Dakota Pump and Control Inspection Agreement. I saw that information under as well.
Yeah, again, this is an annual agreement. As I indicated in the notes, they had listed the main lift station, lift station two, four, and five. I talked to Jared about it, and he said, rather than five, we should probably be looking at lift station six as part of the twenty twenty-four inspection stuff, since there was just work done on five not that long ago, so.
They were willing to, uh, alternate those in, in the contract.
They just put them in there because that's what they did this year.
Okay.
They just pre-filled it.
So their, their, their price is just based on the number, not the specific ones?
Specific ones, yeah.
Okay. Make a motion to, uh, prove moving forward with this annual inspection agreement. Dakota Pump and Control.
A motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Weider. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar, I, Weider, I, Hack, I, Stern, I, Holman Hour.
I, motion carry. All right. Moving on, new business. Authorization resolution for the transit, the two thousand twenty-five transit grant.
Paying is nearly completed with the application for funding for the transit program under fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The authorizing. The authorizing resolution allows her or I to provide information to DOT should they have questions and to get everything submitted properly.
So moved. Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Roll call.
Pillar, I. Hack, I. Stern, I. Weidrich, I. Omenour.
I. Motion carried. And twelve B, the Arbor Day proclamation.
Was contacted today by Joel Allen from the State Forester's office. He asked if we were going to be submitting for the twenty twenty-three Tree City USA designation. And it found out that they hadn't done anything for Arbor Day this year. So he said he would be willing to come up and do just a short presentation for whoever's here at the city on Friday, which would count as our Arbor Day program. We'll submit the paperwork then and the budget that we use for the trees, for tree removal this year. We applied and get our designation for, I think it's the seventy-third year.
So he's just going to come to City Hall here for that?
Yeah.
Do you know the time or anything at this time?
He didn't have a specific time as yet. We'll probably put it out on our website in the app once we have, let anybody come.
Okay, we need a motion for that. Second.
So moved.
Motion by Hack.
Second.
Second by Weidrich. Discussion. Uh, you need a roll call, Monty?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? All right. They're passed. Thirteen, public comment. One that takes us to approval bills. And Monty did have a sheet here with a couple.
Just that one transfer I wanted to do to close out the water storage project, taking two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in change from the Prairie God Fund to transfer into the water fund to cover a little bit of the costs. But if we just do a motion to approve your bill, extend the transfer, we'll be fine.
Motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich, I. Stern, I. Hack, I. Pillar, I. Omenour.
I. Motion carried. Need a good room?